This is the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen, March 25th, 2025. All members are present in the room and we will start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Very good. Comments from the public? Mike, do you have anything?
I've got a chance after I hear what you discussed.
Do you have anything right now?
Yes.
Okay.
How is this retirement gonna go? Is he staying until another one's appointed?
So, the Board of Selectmen is going to have a meeting on Thursday, at which we're going to ratify an agreement. And, but the answer to the question, I mean, I'm not going to be coy with you, is yes. Retirement in April, relieved of police chief duties in April, but on the books until September 1.
Okay. Are you gonna make any promotions or changes before he leaves?
That's not up to us. That's up to the Police Commission.
They're not, they're not capable of thinking it out. They can't, you shouldn't change it until you get a new chief. I mean, they were gonna promote, they promoted sergeants, they're gonna bring in people. We haven't even got this settled yet, and they're gonna love promotions. You, you, you're not doing the new chief a favor by bringing in people now. We got life for how long?
Understood. Okay.
All right.
All right. Anybody online, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. We'll be patient for a minute. Okay. All right. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you guys. Comments from the Selectmen?
I have no prepared done, so.
Matt, anything?
I, little impromptu. As, as you both know, you know, per my employment with the state, I'm not taking a salad. I'm not taking a segment from the Board of Selectmen. And so Leanne had reached out to me in terms of making distributions to, you know, different funds or charities in town.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Fortuna Foundation is now, you know, on the list this round, but I just wanted to share with you. Also, there is going to be a disbursement to the Old Saver Parks and Rec Capital Fund, to Old Saver High School specifically, to help students with scholarships to go on any international trips that the school is doing. I think it's a great opportunity to be able to get out of your, your town and state and see the world, to hope partnership for some upgrades to facilities. It actually comes right in line with, you know, we just received for the town of Old Saver for tree planting and to the town of Old Saver for the climate resilience off-budget fund.
Great. Thanks. I'll make a couple of comments. Within the last hour, the Chief of Police did put out a statement that he is retiring, and it's a joint statement from the chief. I have a comment in there saying the Board of Selectmen wishes him well and thanking him for his service. And we will be discussing some elements of the retirement in executive session. So I'm gonna leave it at that for now. I do wanna cover some more, probably less exciting stuff. We're gonna try to get some quotes on, Jennifer Donahue brought up to me, the light posts in the median are flaking. So we're getting some quotes on basically sanding them down and repainting them. Beaver Dam Trail and Chuckers Mill Pond Dam are on track to get going. We're still not there yet, but we're getting very close. So a lot of capital projects there, I mean, that alone is about a million dollars in capital projects. The Main Street crosswalks are moving along. We have full, hopefully that'll be out today. Still not out today, but it should be soon. Our Steve Grant was submitted for Ferry Road. And I sat in on, as we all know, the Assistant Librarian left. And I sat in on the interviews for the final two. And an offer was made, and I don't know if it's been accepted. I signed the offer sheet, I think today it was, to a potential new Assistant Librarian who was very well-liked and received by the interviewing group. We're gonna talk about the tree grant. We had a, we had a two-hour meeting yesterday. All the towns that are involved in the Essex Transfer Station, you know, I know a lot of people are here for a different reason, but I wish people would focus as much on how we get rid of the trash in our state and a lot of other things, because we have a real problem and the price is going straight up. So yesterday, we had a meeting with Senator Needleman. The transfer, the Essex Transfer Station is in, obviously, under his control and all the other towns that used to be part of the Materials Innovation Recycling Authority. I'm now, I've been on that board, I'm still on that board, but that authority is going to be dissolving on June 30. So we are trying to figure out the way forward. We met with a potential, the current operator of the Essex Transfer Station to see if there is a path forward for the towns that currently take their trash there to keep taking trash there at a reasonable rate. And the, the long and short of it is that our fee would, our, the way we dispose of recyclables and municipal solid waste right now is one fee. It's $136 a ton. So in other words, we don't get charged for recyclables. Well, that world is gone. We are now going to be getting charged for recyclables. So the municipal solid waste fee is gonna be likely very similar to what MIRA would have offered, but the difference to the towns is going to be what it costs us to get rid of recyclables. And it is the intention of the MIRA Essex towns to write a letter to the MIRA as a group, and we have someone doing that to the MIRA Dissolution Authority, which I sit on, asking for reimbursement for the difference over the next two years as to what it will cost to get rid of that delta between what we're paying now and what we're now gonna be paying for the next two years, because we're now being charged for recyclables. As a group, it's north of a million dollars. So the idea would be hold us harmless for the next two years. I think that's what the MIRA Dissolution Authority should do. I don't know if they will do that. And then after that, we're on a roll. Everything is up in the air. There is no long-term contract here for anybody. We don't even know if the Essex Transfer Station will be a viable option, because there's no formal group that will keep this group together to take tonnage there. And without tonnage, there's no sense of an operator keeping people and machines there. If you're not guaranteed a certain amount of tonnage, then it's not worth it. So I know I've reported on this over the last year as to what is going on there and how it's, we're working towards a resolution. It's still up in the air. We had a very productive meeting yesterday, two hours. And we're hoping to have this wrapped up certainly by April 30, but it might even extend into May. It has to be wrapped up by June 30, because that's when the authority dissolves. So I just wanna keep this board updated, because it's just, it's an ever-changing issue, by the way. That's all I have on that. Okay. So there's two, there's a couple of bills up at the State Legislature that are worrying to me. One of them is a bill that made it out of the Labor Committee, basically saying that if you have a paid municipal police or fire, in our case, only police department, that they have to be, they have to have a pension that is comparable or equal to or better than what the state offers through its municipal employees' retirement system, which prior to two years ago was basically a bankrupt system. And there have been reforms made to it under Treasurer Scanlon's, Treasurer, right? Comptroller Scanlon's leadership, and he gets a lot of credit for that. But essentially, this bill would, and it made it out of committee. I don't know what kind of legs it will have in the entire House or the Senate, but it's concerning, because why are we collectively bargaining pensions if we're then gonna be forced into a state pension plan? And I'm not sure. So it's a little bit concerning that it made it as far as it did. I'm just gonna say that's one that caught my eye. There's a bunch of them, but that, to me, is the one that really gets under my skin, because we just negotiated a new police deal that began last July, and we did collectively bargain, as we're required to do, wages and benefits, and we actually did sweeten the pension a little bit. So when I see something like this, it's a little disappointing that they're gonna remove the collective bargaining process from a very important part of what our taxpayers pay, which is the pension. So and I don't oh, I'm not, that's it.
It, it, well, just, just for clarification, so right now, the state plan is paying higher than what we negotiated. So, yeah, just to be clear.
All right. So let's move on to some business here. Approval of minutes from March 11. I'll move, make motions or second. Matt, I think you had a correction to that. I think I made it.
Yeah, I feel seconded.
Yeah, I just need a minute to stretch here. Yep.
That's it?
All good.
All right. Moving to seconded, all those in favor, stick your finger, say hi. Yeah, that's, what did I say, March 11?
March 11.
March 11, right? That's what we just did? Okay.
But we have to do February.
February 11, too. So I'll make a motion on February 11, to your second. Any discussion? All those in favor, stick your finger, say hi. All right, let's move on to item. Attorney Gerard is on the phone. Let's move on to our Director of Youth and Family Services, Heather McNeil.
Thank you. So Larry, how do I make it just?
Go up the slideshow. So, yes.
Matt got me. There we go. Okay. So thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. For anybody who is in the audience who doesn't know me online, my name's Heather McNeil. I've been the Director of Youth and Family for 15 years, and I've been involved in the community student surveys four times previous to this one, which was given in December of 2024. And I am a treatment provider as well, I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist and health and care counselor. I'm also a Department of Transportation substance use professional. So for, just for some background, in December, students from the middle school and the high school, grade six through 12, participated in a new survey tool this year called the Youth Voices Count, and the questions relate to youth lifestyles, substance use, mental health, and related risk and protective factors. The survey was completely anonymous. No identifying information was collected. Students were provided an instructional video prior, made up of students at the high school, talking about confidentiality, the right to opt out, and resources if the survey brought up uncomfortable feelings. And that will be important later when I'm discussing mental health. Won't advance, Larry.
Curse of the harrowbuns.
Thank you. So I wanted to explain a little bit about the Youth Voices Count survey and why we chose this tool this time. Some important parts of it included add-on modules that we could use to individualize the survey experience for our own community. And the same survey is also being used in many communities across Connecticut. So a lot of youth service bureaus, it's very helpful when we're all speaking the same language related to the results when we're developing new initiatives and collaborating. One of the great things about youth service bureaus in the Middlesex region in particular is that we all get together monthly and we share a lot of resources, which is helpful in terms of cost efficiency for our communities. We also added a Spanish-language version for our community as well. So why is it important to measure some of the things that this survey sought to measure? And why is it important to ask these questions? For our students, this was the only tool that they'll come across this year or other years that asked the, the scope of questions that we asked. There are many surveys that they take throughout the year related to safe climate and mental health, but this one also asked about risk, risk factors and protective factors, like what's going well? What's the perception of the relationship with their parents? You know, what do they know about substances? Do they know where to get them? Do they know how to use them? And how is that impacting anything that they're doing in terms of their academic performance, foreign sports activities? And one of the reasons that we wanna measure this, and we're so glad that sixth grade was included this time, is because by the time we get the data back, it's months later, and by the time we implement some of the changes, it's the summertime, and then they're going into seventh grade. So it gives us that much more time to put things in place for them, seventh grade, eighth grade, and then transitioning into high school. So really glad we had that opportunity. And we also know that we're measuring age of first use, because that's an important factor in determining potential impact of negative, negative impact on their future from early onset of substance use. So the response rate was very high here. We had an opt-out process that the Board had approved. So parents, a few parents, mostly in the younger grades, opted their students out. And there were quite a few absences in the high school that day. We had over, we had 88.28% for the sixth through eighth grade, and then seven through 12 overall, over 80% of the students in the community took the survey. So risk and protective factors, and you probably remember this languaging from HCHY and the Search Institute survey previously. Risk factors are things that may be impacting youth negatively, either in their family, in the school or community, and, and just within themselves. What it can look like for the school and community is maybe poor academic performance, maybe they're experiencing bullying in school or in the community, lack of school resources. And the community, if there's under-resourced financially, lack of recreational opportunities and higher crime rates. The protective factors are internal and external. They can be that a child may be personality-wise and temperamentally much more resilient and strong in certain ways. Their family environment is positive and kind of forward-focused. In the community, what that looks like is we try to increase all students' access to positive youth development programming and activities, that there's an availability of faith-based resources, that there's after-school programs, caring relationships with positive adult role models, and a positive school climate. So emotional health, and here for all the presentations I've done so far, I just wanna say that often when we do a survey, people get really nervous about what the results are gonna show, and there's some anxiety about what we're gonna see. I do wanna say that there were no areas of the data that we got back where we were shocked and were like, we didn't expect that. All of this was very much in keeping with our experience with kids, either in our programming, through counseling, or experience with them in school. And then, I'll mention this again later, but when we contacted the survey developer, they were able to steer us towards national studies that shows that Saver is very much in keeping with trends across the country. And we're on the low side for, for some things. So mental health in the past year, 17.5% of Old Saver youth report having anxiety in the past year always or almost always. Most frequent sources of this included academics, post-high school plans, and their schedule. 14.1% of youth reported feeling sad or hopeless, so much that it stopped them from doing usual activities two or more weeks in a row. 9.2% reported having considered suicide in the past year. Now, I wanna comment on that so that there's better understanding. So the 9.2% are for any students who commented yes to the question, have you ever considered suicide? If they said yes, they continued on with the questions. If they said no, none of the other questions showed up for them. So the 9.2 actually represents less than eight students in the district, which is still not a great number, but I wanted to give you that number so you would have that understanding. And we also know that anxiety can be, is a normal condition in our, in our bodies. So sometimes it's a helpful reaction to stress and a debilitating or debilitating disorder, depending on its intensity and duration. So all of this data gives us opportunities for further conversations with kids in the school. Like, what did you mean by your response? When you read the question this way, what did that word mean to you? So we wanna use this going forward with them. So sources of stress, anxiety, or worries, I mentioned before, and in grades nine through 12, you can see academics and post-high school plans, appropriate as so for their development, was high. Their schedules were an area of source of stress and anxiety for them. We were encouraged to see that social media over on the right was not. So that's interesting for us to note that. Other emotional health issues, indicators in the past year, thoughts of self-harm, self-harm, physical abuse when you're with a partner, sad or hopeless two weeks in a row, felt lonely often. Way over on the right, of course, that's very concerning for us, that those numbers. You know, what does that mean? There's a disconnect related maybe to technology. Due to COVID, we're still experiencing some of the ripple effects of that isolated period. Due to COVID, families potentially had to move for employment, or people don't necessarily have a grandparent cohort in the area for them. So that's an area for us to do a little bit of work going forward.
Other question?
Yes.
The thoughts of self-harm, that means they've thought about it versus self-harm is actually having taken action? And is there, the way the questions were done, is there overlap between those two populations? Or is it distinct groups?
No, it's, it, there is some overlap on that, and I could get that for you going forward. And then in that area too, when they talk about suicidal ideation, we'd like to have conversations with students about what that meant to them. Do they actually have a plan and some means for suicide? Or are they thinking, I just don't wanna be here today? I mean, there's a whole area. And just in terms of anyone who's concerned about the questions here being asked and then not followed up on. Prior to the folks taking the survey, we played a video that told them how to access help if they were feeling suicidal, and we always have suicide prevention information available throughout the school. Our staff was also in the building when the survey was taking place. And if they answered yes to that suicidal question, then a whole module popped up that talked about how to access help if you needed it. And then post-survey, we were also within the school, and students were informed that we were available if they wanted to talk about anything that was going on for them. So that is always an area of concern when we wanna do this. At the top, you can see the Connecticut School, the High School State Survey completed in 2023. The numbers there were a little bit higher than the Saver numbers, but there's still, we do have some concern about students who are expressing their angst in physical ways towards themselves. So comfort-seeking by source, a family and school, we're very happy to see over on the left there, parents and guardians are hired, all the way through grade six through 12. And I think for parents, it's gonna be very comforting to know that their students do see them as a primary source of someone they can go to for support and comfort. And some of the other areas where we can do a little more work around this area here, staff and coaches, their friends, of course, peer groups are always very important, but also being able to identify another trusted adult in the community. So this area here, trusted adult and feelings of safety, grade six through eight, very high. One adult I can share with, all above 92%. Feel safe in their community, which is great. The initial survey back in 1997, I happen to remember being told that the, it was 6% at that time, students identified feeling not comfortable and not cared for within their community. And that was the, the origin of healthy community, healthy youth starting. So to see that there's such a shift in terms of how kids feel connected is really a positive thing for our community to know.
6% in Old Saver?
Yeah, 1997. So substance use and perceptions, as I mentioned at the beginning, age of first use is a characteristic marker in the data for increased risk for overall lifetime of negative impact. So here we see that 11 and a half years old was the first reported use of gambling. So that's fifth grade, I think. And for gambling and gaming, what that may mean is access to online gaming platforms, where they do have some access also to either parents' credit card or their own gift cards that they got for Christmas, where they are betting and then utilizing the resources to advance in gains. So the concern that we have around that is it sets up that, that dopamine release and, and risk and reward process that leads towards a previous position to wanting to keep going with that behavior. There is some of the research that indicates when folks go to casino, if they have gambling problem, they actually hook them up to several different monitors. And once they just hear a slot machine, and they can be in a very different room, or they smell the casino and aroma and the sounds, that their blood pressure goes up, they actually start to salivate, and it creates that compulsion in their brain to begin using. So there's a lot of science behind this process, even for youth who are gaming, gambling. Where substances are required most often is always an interesting piece for us, because we do a lot of environmental prevention work. So the peer group is very high, that's the gray bar in the middle, all the way across. But home with parents for alcohol and home without, home with parents, 41.9%, 23.3% home without parents. Connecticut is one of the only states where someone underage, under 21 years old, can be served alcohol in a restaurant, or it has to be given to them by their parent or caregiver, and they can also serve legally in their own home. So alcohol and marijuana were the most-used substances in, in the data for Old Saver. Where substances are used most often, grade six through 12, again, with peer group, most predominantly, that's the gray bar in the middle there, and then with friends at their home. At home with my parents or guardians present is the darker one there. And so alcohol was at about 37.2% there. So connected and thriving youth, that has to do with, you know, what are some of the things that lead to more positive youth development? And as we can see here, activities, taking lessons, clubs or organizations. We're, we're concerned, over on the left, you can see none, 76.1% in terms of faith or religious activities. And attendance at church has gone down, you know, nationally and everywhere, certainly within the last decade. Practicing, taking lessons, music or art, clubs or organizations like Scouts. So that's a relatively high number. Some of that, we know, is due to either transportation after school or lack of resources financially. So that's the part maybe where the community comes into play, where access to park and rec programming and, and art programming can have some equity built into it in terms of cost for, for the residents there. So less than one hour for any of those activities, all the way over, you can see not a lot happening there. The one that, as a working mom, I particularly take offense at is this one, where nobody's doing chores. And, you know, I think, you know, it's, it was definitely a big part of my growing up, probably for all of you as well. And what is doing chores, you know, connote, it means, you know, it's a pro-social activity that, you know, identifies or characterizes that you're part of a family, that you, that you care about other people. pro-social activity that, you know, identifies or characterizes that you're part of a family, that you care about other people. Civic duties as well, I know we have community service within our community. But is there a way that we can increase any of these things here? Volunteering, taking care of someone at home, or working at a job. For those who are under sixteen, of course, working at a job is difficult. But even the ones in grades nine through twelve who are over seventeen, very few are actually employed. So some of the risk factors, and this has to do certainly with the disconnected youth study that you all are familiar with and that we're tying into all the work we're going to be doing going forward. With students who are absent more frequently, if they've moved, if they've been suspended or expelled or involved in legal trouble, those are the students that we, you know, are potentially more vulnerable and that we always want to keep our eyes on. So the numbers there, I think the highest is grade nine through twelve in terms of absenteeism. So truancy is definitely a risk characteristic. Some toxic stress. Then this goes, not all stress is bad. There's positive stress, getting ready for a big game or a test, tolerable, waiting for medical information at the doctor. And toxic, described as excessive or prolonged activation of stress response systems in the brain and body. You'll be at greater risk for health problems like heart disease, diabetes, and depression. So these are the students potentially who have family stress, which might mean that they're under-resourced. Maybe there's substance use at home, or the parent unit is disrupted by military deployment, divorce, or incarceration. These are the students that find it harder to connect and become involved at school. They are not present in after-school activities. And they aren't necessarily doing as well academically as their peers. Oops, I'm sorry. Sorry. There you have it, go back.
You can do it that way.
Okay, hang on one sec. Almost done. Okay. F five right now?
Yep.
There we go. Never going to forget that.
Because from the beginning.
All right, here we go. Okay. So we do know in SABR, because we're also connected to our social service office, that food insecurity is at kind of an all-time high here in SABR and has been increasing. So there's food programs in the Googum School and the middle school. And then we're definitely connected currently with the school system, trying to plan the summer food program. And then housing problems are always high, housing insecurity, people living in places that have maybe more people living in them than they're meant to. I'm not sure from one month to the next where they might be, where they're going to be spending. Toxic stress in juvenile violence. This was an interesting past twelve months, seeing violence in the lifetime community. Again, these are conversations we want to have with students, like, what does this mean to you? Does this mean you were watching something online or on TV? Did you see people fighting? I don't often see anything like that in the community, so I'm not sure exactly what they were referring to here. This part over here in terms of being a victim of violence is very low, so that was encouraging. So about where we're going to go from here, some thoughts are conversations with community stakeholders and leaders of the community, of course. You know, one thing that we wanted to do was increase accessibility for students for after-school programming and sports. And, you know, when that, when you made that dispersment to the high school for travel, that was something that had come up at our commission meeting where some students who might want to go on a DC trip, they can't afford it. And so that means that they're left out of a large learning and social experience that's a very notable event in the life of the high school. You know, how can we increase the opportunity for some students to go? But also programming things like parking rec and, you know, how was the pricing structure for that set? And how much wiggle room is there? So often we get calls to scholarship folks in the summer. And I'm not sure it makes a lot of sense for our office to use scholarship to another town department. And so I'd like to be able to think about, you know, what's a way that we can set a scale so that we can increase access in the numbers to ten years. So one of the things you'll see on the left there is an environmental strategy that we got involved with with Park and Rec a few years ago, where we put signage on town property that there is a town ordinance for no tobacco and cannabis and alcohol use. And some of it may be an awareness issue, maybe people don't know they're not supposed to drink on the beach. And, you know, we also didn't want the young Park and Rec staff to have to go up to adults and say something to them. We're hoping by increasing some environmental signage that that has an impact. Tonight, we're doing a cyber safety presentation at six thirty with a cyber expert, Scott Driscoll. So we'll be doing a lot of programming intentionally in response to different areas of the survey that shows areas of vulnerability. And trying to increase communication and involvement in a lot of different ways. So I look forward to, you know, coming back next year and telling you what kind of response we had to those initiatives.
Could you get me a copy of the slide deck?
Absolutely. And this is only part of it. It was actually very extensive and we
For the minute, it's just this?
Oh, yeah.
Based on your presentation.
Sure, yeah. Any questions?
It's always interesting. I mean, I guess one of the questions I have is obviously, the data is not perfect. Kids might not know what depression really means, you know? They might just feel sad that day, it's really Monday, you know? So I assume that the data takes into account that information. And even for some of the more dramatic statements in here, some of that might be overstated, maybe it could be understated, I don't know. But knowing teens, it seems to me it might be more overstated, but
Yes, it could be. You know, I think one thing that I've said for a long time is when I was growing up, I never knew the words anxiety and depression. But now it's such a part of our general lexicon that kids at a very young age know what it means. Or they not say it, they don't necessarily know what it means. So it's always an opportunity for us to go into the health classes and things and have actual discussions around, you know, what does that mean? Because a certain amount of feeling blue is part of the human condition. It doesn't necessarily mean that you need to be honest with your students.
I think one of the things that jumps out, I mean, there was the, on the earlier slides, the indication of loneliness that was high. But then when you went to the later slides and it talked about how many hours they're actually spending in activities.
Right.
And, you know, that seems like a place where, as a community, we can start to figure out what are some of those barriers? How can we put either systems in place or processes? How do we open up some of those doors to connect kids to activities so that they have less loneliness, you know?
Yeah. And also the senior citizens experience a lot of social isolation through COVID. And one of our programs, Senior Strengths, which we've consolidated, is meant to increase engagement and music. So we're actually designing younger programs, we can have a generational concert. And so, you know, those are some ways that we hope to increase those two areas. But there's also a disconnect between the one slide that showed ninety-five percent was the average of how they're looking forward to their future. They feel positive about it. Then there's a disconnect with what they're recording about self-harm and depression and isolation. So, but this is just a starting point with this tool. In three years, that will actually be the more interesting survey, the same tool, but in response to some of the initiatives we're going to do going forward.
And Heather, was this shared with Board of Education?
It was, I did look at it last month. Yeah. And so we're already working with the Board of Ed and other departments to address different areas, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Okay. Thank you.
All righty, we're going to move right on. Discussion, possible action to approve instead of public hearing on a resolution regarding joining the youth support redevelopment authority. My bad, last time we passed the resolution, but the statute Public Act requires a public hearing. So what we'll do in two weeks, we'll have a meeting, we'll have a public hearing within the Board of Selectment meeting.
Okay.
And then we'll just pass the resolution and so, okay?
Great.
So I'll make a motion that we have a public hearing. I think it's April eighth would be that Tuesday, because April first is next Tuesday. At eight-thirty in the morning, that's our meeting. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion on that? And here again, all those in favor, same as I. All right. Need to sign this. I'll write it in more neatly after. Discussion and action, authorizing resolution with regard to the grant that was applied for that the tree committee was interested in applying for, that Amy Claffey wrote for us, using some of the grant funding that was set aside from last year's surplus. And he didn't get it, so we're very excited to move forward. So I think this is pretty straightforward. This is a fifty percent match, so there's going to be an action item on the April first Board of Finance meeting to match it, to do the other half. And I think the materials are in your packet. Matt? So I'll make a motion, sir, a second. Any questions on this? It's not, that was great. Yeah, it's more of a, you know, we applied for it, we got it. Amy Claffey was very excited, it was her first grant that she received, so that's great.
Okay.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's good when you have success.
Yeah, right. And we did not get one of the other grants we applied for through DEEP. The MM was a materials grant, we were trying to get a bailer. We did not get that. So, all right, then move to the second, all those in favor.
Two percent.
I'd be saying, I can't remember whether I did that or not. Discussion and possible action on refund of an encroachment permit at thirty-nine North Cove Road. I'll make that motion, sir, a second, second. All those in favor? And I want to add to the agenda, we just got one today. A a discussion and possible action refund of a, wait, hold on a second. Seeking a refund of the building permit fee regarding eleven Crest Road, as I've said before, this is typically solar, that doesn't get installed. I was going to call, okay. And the original permit fee was thirteen hundred and ten dollars. They're doing a refund of eleven seventy-nine based on the ten percent administrative fee. So I'll make that motion, I'll make a motion to add that to the agenda, sir, a second. Second, by Matt, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. And I'll make a motion that we approve the refund as stated, is, sir, second, second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay. So with that, I'm going to call Attorney Duran. Hopefully I have the signal in here.
Do we need to do?
I asked if we could get on the Zoom and
Do we need to do a motion to go into executive session?
Well, in a second, yeah.
I call.
Hey, hey, Gabe, you're, we're in public session still here. I just wanted to get you on the phone. So you're not joining, obviously, through Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll just keep you on the phone?
Yeah, or I can join through Zoom, whichever it is.
I think it's fine, just wait it. So hang in there, all right, so we're going to make a motion. I don't know that when we come out that we will in fact be not just straight adjourning. Now, earlier in the meeting, when Mr. Looney asked me a question, I did reference an agreement. If there's an interest in obtaining that agreement, I would recommend an FLI. And we will respond appropriately to that, okay? And I think we're going to have one from the examiner, so. So we're going to make a motion to go into executive session, we're inviting Attorney Duran. And I'll make that motion, sir, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we are going into executive session. We are back in open session, coming out of executive session, we have no further business. I know there are people still on the line, we do have a Board of Selectment special meeting Thursday at two PM. And I think there'll be more information shared at that time. But there is no further business, so we're going to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
By Scott, second by Matt, all those in favor?
Aye.